Welcome. Today is February 26, 2019. It's 5:30 PM. We are at Tenway State Street, which is the City Hall Council Chambers. I'm calling the meeting to order and have to read this long notice to public. The mayor and city council welcome comments from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You're required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your time to three minutes or less so others may be given the opportunity. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have the staff respond during the meeting. With those who are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Goudy.
Here.
Hoop.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Lamer.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Weren.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Very good. Full house. Let's see. Now's the time for mayor, council, or administrator comments. Does anyone on the council or the administration have any comments? I might have some. Go for it.
I would just like to say thank you to everybody who participated in the charrette for the downtown master plan over this last week. We saw what I thought was pretty good participation and had a lot of great feedback. The next public event will be an open house in May, and so that will be the next time to see where we're at with things and sort of basically a final rough draft form. So stay tuned for that.
Well, thanks a lot. That was exactly what I was going to say. So let me add that if it seems like I'm speeding the meeting up, it is a little bit. There's a basketball game tonight that some of us would like to see. I had to give up my tickets, so I'll just have to watch it from home. But go clones.
Your honor.
Yes, sir.
Comment. I've always said and taken pride in Marshalltown being a volunteering community, and it's my realization continually that we have a lot of volunteers that serve on our boards and commissions, library board, for example, that I appreciate especially. And I would encourage those who are interested in serving the city in some way that way would contact our mayor. Again, I want to express my appreciation and probably that of the council for all of the hours and the effort and the expertise they bring to these commissions and boards. So a thank you shout out.
And because it's always fun to have the last word. The turnout at the library was really good this weekend, and man, those coffee cakes are wonderful that they were selling. If you didn't like the books, you could buy something good to eat there. And that is a wonderful facility. We're coming up on the 10-year anniversary for that, too. Any other comments? Let's do years of service, then. Chief, have you got?
Those are both Justin.
Oh, they're both Justin. Justin. Nobody's present, waving the reading and waving the years of service. We should recommend, mention them, though. You know, it's a tough night to get out. Bad weather continues here. Rick Rasmussen, five years, and Lance Griesel, 25 years of service at the city. And I kind of tell you, folks, I'm getting more calls of compliments from people about our snow removal and the way the city is working on things than complaints, and that's unusual when you're having a bitter cold winter like we are. Okay, let's go on to the consent agenda, then. Is there a motion to approve it?
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Madam clerk, would you speed read those items?
Approve the council minutes of February 11 and approve the bill less for $883,822.66. Reaccede the building permit report for January. Approve December financial statements. Approve resolution approving the 28E agreement with Marshall County for collection of parking tickets. Resolution authorizing the city of Marshalltown to submit a grant application to the state of Iowa Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau for the contract period of October 1 through September 30, 2020. Resolution authorizing the repair of compressor number two for the water pollution control department from Gardner Denver Nash for the price of $63,174.40. Resolution adopting the 2019-2020 strategic plan. Approve alcohol license renewals. Quickstar Depot Liquor and Grocery, Ivy Food and Drug Store, American Legion, Frank Lewis Glick Post, Friends of the Orpheum Theater Grocery Store and Tortillas, La Vesta and Dad, Golden Land Smoke and Cheese BBQ Restaurant and Catering, Casey's General Store, and La Careta Mexican Grill.
Thank you.
On to motions.
We have a motion to approve two new liquor licenses pending final fire inspection, one being the cases on North Third Avenue that was rebuilt after the tornado and the Marshalltown Speedway, which is a six-month renewal. It's actually a new six-month, but there's been no site or ownership changes.
I move for approval for both, your honor.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, on to item H, resolutions. Would you read the first one, please?
Resolution authorizing the city of Marshalltown to submit a grant application to the Iowa Community Assurance Pool to assist with costs associated with police policy and development expenses and authorizing the city of Marshalltown to execute all necessary documents and agreements for police policy review and development services with Lexipol.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Discussion.
I sense that there's a need to go fast, so I'll try to go fast. But there was a memo in your packet, so I won't regurgitate what you've already read. But the development and implementation of police policies are pretty important to what we do, and we have a really good police policy writing team in the Marshalltown Police Department made up of cops. We don't have any lawyers on that team, and we've never had access to lawyers who specialize in police practices. So what this proposal allows for is us to go into business with a company, Lexipol, that specializes in police policy, police training, and police practices. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to take a look at our policy manual that is pushing 250 to 300 pages and allow us to bring that up to date and make sure that we're current with best practices because what police officers do on a daily basis has a lot of liability for the city and their critical functions, and we want to make sure that we're doing things the right way. So the proposal is asking for you to allow the police chief to enter into a contract or an agreement with Lexipol for these services. And the good news is ICAP, our insurance pool, has implemented a grant program, a three-year grant program, for agencies that go into business with Lexipol. So there's some cost benefit to us, and we can save a little money. So, and that's all outlined in the memo. Staff is recommending that we apply for the ICAP grant and that we enter into the agreement with Lexipol, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any?
Well, the grants, three years, is the intention that we only do the initial first three years with Lexipol, or is this going to be an additional ongoing expense that we're planning for?
Yeah, if you allow me to continue to be your police chief into the future, I would love to continue this business partnership with Lexipol. I think it's a good thing. What this does is allow us for quarterly review of our policies and updates of our policies, and it implements an accountability program for our staff so we can make sure that our staff knows the policies, understands the policies. There's also daily training bulletins that are pushed out to staff, testing staff on policy. So I think that this is a good thing for the department. Certainly, we can review this after the three-year period, and I think worst-case scenario, as I mentioned to city administrator Kinzer when I proposed this, is maybe we stop after three years. At least we know we have a clean policy manual. Because right now, we have a policy manual that's been added to and put together over the last 20 years, quite frankly, and probably needs some work. But yeah, if I'm still here in three years, I'll be asking you to continue the partnership if we can afford it.
Other questions or comments?
Chief, can we do, break it down? One year, renew, review?
Yeah, this is something that we can always look at annually, and maybe we do the first year and we see where we're at. But there, you know, I think the first year ICAP is offering, I don't think, I know, the first year ICAP is offering us $7,500 towards that $13,900 and some dollar fee. And then year two and year three, we're eligible for $5,000 each year. So there is a lot of cost benefit for us to continue the program.
Is that grant process a year-on-year basis or a apply-for-it-and-it's-a-three-year-term grant?
It's apply-for-it, and you're going to receive it, and it's a three-year term that you receive the money for. Of course, if we stop our services with Lexipol after one year, you know, ICAP will stop the grant program.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
I just would recommend that we review after a year to see the effectiveness and the, you know, the worth of that.
Sure.
I'm open to it.
Okay. I'd like to comment that last Thursday and Friday was the annual meeting of the American, no, the Iowa Academy of Trial Lawyers, and I didn't know that Iowa has an attorney specialist in suing police departments. He's from Cedar Rapids. He was one of the speakers, and if there are people out there like that, you probably need to make sure you have good policies in place.
Absolutely.
Those attorneys.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, I realize this is a lot of money, but when you consider what it costs to defend a lawsuit, this is a small amount of money.
Exactly. Well, if there are no other questions, comments, or public comment, let's go ahead and do the roll call. Well, I guess, what is the, is the motion for the five, three years then, or?
Yep.
Okay.
Resolution.
Resolution, okay. Roll call.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
No.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Carrie, let's go to resolution number two, please.
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the order of contract for the High Street Drainage Improvement Project, BLD 17001, in the amount of $1,749,100.80.
Should we start with the motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. In your packet is the bid tab and a recommendation from Bolton &amp; Mink. We did open bids last Tuesday, February 19, on the High Street Drainage Improvement Project. We got two bids. The low bid was from Construct Incorporated Local for 1.749, and the second bid was from Gerke Incorporated in Eldora for about 2.365 million. The 1.749 is slightly above the engineer's estimate. We did review the bid tabs to make sure if there's anything that stuck out to us, there was nothing evident. My best guess would be that the contractor placed a little more emphasis on the timeframes of having our levy open and the risk that that poses, or the timeframe that they would need to have High Street open to remove the existing pipes, set the new box culvert, and then have it back open in traffic. So we are recommending that the council approves this bid, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any? Public comment? Roll call.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Very good. Carried again, and would you read item, I'm sorry, resolution number three, please?
Resolution approving an amendment to an agreement for professional services with Bolton &amp; Mink in the amount of $167,700.
Again, for the High Street Drainage Improvement Project, this would be to provide construction administration services, inspection, observation. This is, again, with Bolton &amp; Mink. They did, if you read the details of the proposals, they are expecting about 23 weeks of a full-time construction observer inspector on-site, averaging more than 40 hours a week while they're on-site. So that might be a small explanation on the dollar price tag for this. We currently don't have the staff to inspect this project ourselves.
I probably should have solicited a motion and second.
Well, I have, oh, go ahead.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Now, let's have discussion.
I already let him, this means that our total engineering cost for this project will be 22.2% of the cost of the project. That's too much. That's absolutely too much to do everything that we're going to have them do. I would recommend that we at least look at somebody else and get another comparison cost from another engineering firm. I am concerned that with a couple of their staff members who might be here, and you ought to be two, because one of them is one that we requested never to come back here again, and he now works for them, and another one is from another firm that the same thing happened to. So I'm asking that we at least get one more price on this before we, 22.5% on a 17, a million seven project, that's an awful lot of engineering money. That's a ton, and we need to watch our expenses. That's it. That's all I got.
Could you break down the numbers a little bit for me? I'm not following your math.
Well, we got 167,000 here. Their design fee was, I can't remember what it was for sure, but then there was some more fees added to that because of, because, you got them?
Yep. So the original contract amount was for 67,300, and that did not implement final design. That was back when we wanted to take a look at the localized problem that we knew existed on High Street plus the continuation upstream up the system to Fourth and Engledee. So then we came back with amendment number one, and that added in those services to actually design from High Street, the levy, to Fourth and Engledee. Amendment number two was for easement acquisition services, which, once again, with my staffing levels, we certainly didn't have anybody to go out and get signatures. This amendment number three, that's kind of why I prefaced this on, it's at 167,000. That is a not-to-exceed amount, and once again, why I added in the details about it's 23 weeks of a full-time construction observation person. We'll do our best. We do believe we have a construction inspector hired so that maybe we can supplement them and not spend all of this money, but I would recommend to the city council that we approve this contract. It's a not-to-exceed amount. We'll do our best not to spend that amount of money, but it does take construction observation on a full-time basis. And conversing with Greg Broussard before we got in here, when we're working through the levy, the Army Corps of Engineer requires that someone be there whenever that levy is open all the time, so there's a premium on that this time as well. I can appreciate Councilman Lamer's comments, but I would recommend that we approve this contract.
Then I would ask that in the future, we make sure that we review, are we asked for a second, second number from somebody else? Because that's a ton of money. And it's not our job to make a consultant rich. Thank you. That's it.
Other questions or comments? Public comment? Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Weren.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
No.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Would you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution approving proposed budget for operations and setting the public hearing date of March 11.
Is there a motion to approve that?
So move. Second.
Comment.
So I'd like to provide a little recap of the whole budget cycle. So in November, the mayor and the council met with the city administrator and department directors to create a strategic plan. The directors then developed and loaded their budgets into our software, and then the city administrator, finance director, and accounting manager met with each director separately, and we made more adjustments. When the county finally released the property tax valuations at the end of December, we computed our property tax revenue, and then we entered that into the budget system. So once again, we made more adjustments. Starting with the first council meeting in January through today, pieces of the budget were brought forth at every meeting for discussion and review with the mayor and council. Changes were made on these sheets based on those councils' directives. The public has also had opportunity for public comment during those council meetings. The reports provided to you today for this agenda item and the next agenda item are an accumulation of those discussions and directives that you have given us. With your approval tonight, a public hearing will be set for March 11, and the public notice will be published in the Times Republican newspaper this week. At the March 11 meeting, changes can still be made, but only if you are lowering the levy or lowering the budgeted expenses. From that meeting, final changes, if any, will then be made to the budget documents, and then I will bring them to the county auditor for certification before March 15. So I wanted to go over the budget documents with you. So starting at the top, these are our value property tax valuations. The regular line, regular valuations do not include TIF, and the debt service does include TIF, so that is the difference. The regular valuations increased by 44 million, and the debt service increased by 37 million with the gas and electric utilities. Without the gas and electric, valuations increased by 28 million, and debt service increased by 21 million. The agriculture land include, increased by 133,000. So how these rates are calculated and dollar amounts are calculated is you take these dollar amounts here, divide by 1,000, and take it times your rate, which gives you your total dollar amount. So the first line on the regular general levy, which is referred to as the 810 levy because almost every city uses that much, it's the minimum and the maximum. It's not the minimum, it's the maximum, $8.10 for the regular general levy. So this produces about $7 million that can be used for any purpose out of the general fund. Coming down to the next line, line seven, is for our transit system. So the levy rate is 36 cents. We could go up to 95 cents. This comes into the general fund, and then we transfer it to our transit fund. So when we're doing the transit budget, we look at the revenues that it's generating, and we subtract off the expenses, and so this is the amount that we needed for the year, $316,000. Line nine is operation of a city-owned civic center. This is what we consider the Fisher Community Center. Again, during our January meetings, we raised this. It was $76,000 before, and we raised it to $100,000 with your directive. They have not had an increase for 10 years. Liability, property, and self-insurance costs. Again, this is what we're projecting our premium to be with ICAP. So that is just the amount necessary. The support of a local emergency management commission, this is what the Marshall County bills us for our share. Again, the amount necessary, $30,200. Line 15 is for the instrumental music groups. This is for the Marshalltown Community Band. It stayed the same as last year, $11,000. In line 23, the public library. Voters passed this referendum a couple of years ago, and it's at 27 cents for the levy. And then the ag land is, again, at the maximum rate, $3.00, fractions of cents. The emergency fund on line 28, this is if you need more than the 810 levy. You can levy an additional 27 cents, which we are doing, and we have been doing for many, many years. The police and fire retirement, $1.1 million. The next one is the FICA and IFRS. Again, this is the amount necessary to make our general fund whole for those items. And then other employee benefits, that includes health insurance, workers' comp, unemployment, retirement payouts. So these items five through 27 come into our general fund, which is 001. And then these are other special revenue funds, but eventually, they make it back to the general fund for reimbursement. The debt service levy, we will talk about in just a little bit. There's a special sheet for that. And the capital projects, again, we take the maximum at 67.5 cents. What's important is this number right here. So this is what we are requesting to levy, $15, 15.38434. This is an increase of about 10 cents over the current year. Are there any questions on this page before I move on? This next page, which I should try and turn over here. Where's my little spinny thing? Jessica, can you rotate the page?
We can all just go like this.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So this is your fund balance sheet. What's in green is what we reported on our annual financial report, which we brought to you back in November, and you approved. The next several pages are fiscal year '19 expenses and revenues, and then FY '20. So the other pages roll into these numbers automatically. That's why they're colored. This page, again, is support of a local emergency management commission, which we paid to the Marshall County, which I already went over. So here's your expense, here's your expenses for fiscal year '19. So we start breaking them out by the different government activities. So there's nine government activities, and we break them out even further in our own budget and identify these items, whether it's the general fund, special revenues, TIF, debt service, capitals, permanent, proprietary, and then it rolls forward for the total. And then you can do a comparison for fiscal year '18. So for fiscal year '19, just a reminder, this is just a reestimate. We are not asking for a budget amendment at this time. That will be done later in May when we can, when we have a chance to identify all the tornado expenses. So we just have to do one for the year. And then here's the revenues for fiscal year '19. And for fiscal year '19, we're very heavy on tornado expenses, but the revenue is not really going to hit until fiscal year '20, so. So then this page is your FY '20 page, and it, again, rolls to the total for '20, and then you can do a comparison from '19 and '18. In my memo, I did put a lot of other information, but again, I won't repeat it. Fiscal year 2020 revenues, our lead grant did come back, so we have full 12 months of that. So then here's the overall summary for the prior six pages. Gives you a summary of the revenues, the transfers in, expenditures, transfers out, and our fund balance. So these items here, expenditures, this is what you're authorizing us to spend by this activity. So lines 18 through 25 and 27. Here's the long-term debt page. Again, we've been over this several times, but this is the principal and interest in bond fees for each of our outstanding bonds. The far right column is what we are levying. The next column to the left of that is The next column to the left of that is being paid by other sources, such as the enterprise funds or TIF. So way down here at the bottom, we're using property tax relief from local option sales tax as the voters approve, using 78% of lost. So right away, we're taking that off the top, so 2.4 million dollars. And then over the course of the last several meetings, we decided to take another half a million. So that is split between 390,000 from fund balance of the local option sales tax, tax relief, and then 110,000 for council designated. So the original levy would have been quite a bit more if we hadn't taken those off. Here's another page. This is the page that will be published in the paper this week. So again, it lists the different budgets and the rate. So are there any questions on these documents?
I had one. Go ahead. Do we see the budget for emergency management, or do they just send us a bill?
They send us a bill.
We don't see what their budget is or anything?
The city or the committee?
It's public, I mean, they publish it in the newspaper. They have publication requirements and then as it's being, as they're going along, Kim Elder sends us an estimate of what it would be, what our contribution would be, and then we include that in our budget as we go.
How do they come up with the 30% or whatever it is?
That's, that's not a question I have the answer to.
Okay, thank you.
And I serve on that board because I have to, and I can't answer that question either. But, but that budget process is about as exciting as this.
I thought it always had to do with what they perceived our usage to be versus the rest of the county.
County used 60%?
Well, that's kinda, yeah. That's what I'm remembering from many years ago.
Okay.
So the next document, set of documents is the cash balance, which I have shown you along the way, only they were separated at the time by the different funds. So what to notice is in the general fund, it's zero. So the revenues equal expenses, as you wanted us to show. The cash flow reserve, you let us allocate enough money so that there's a 15% of total expenditures in the general fund as our reserve. So we use local option sales tax council designated for that. Fund 30, again, that's based on the CIP, which we're going to go over shortly, and the next agenda item. So this all ties out to that fund balance report that we talked about just a little bit ago. So are there any questions on this? If not, I'll go on. So the next 200 some pages are a breakout of everything I brought to you before. I do want to let you know that I did have to make one correction. It's in funds 741. We originally put bond funds being issued this fiscal year, and it's actually next fiscal year, fiscal year '20, so I just shifted it over. Any questions on this document? It's pretty big, but you've, you've seen it before, because we've brought in pieces of it before.
Do we need to approve resolution number four separately than five separately then?
Yes. Marshall Town Water Works budget is included in our budget, so I showed you their documents. And just to give you another recap of the local option sales tax of where you're, where you have approved to spend it so far. So are there any questions?
Any public comment, questions?
Call the roll.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. Carry it again. Would you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution approving capital improvement plan proposed budget and set public hearing date for March 11.
Is there a motion first?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you. Comment?
Diana Snyder, Finance Director. So first of all, there's a correction on the memo that needs to be made. This should be fiscal year 19 through fiscal year '23. It does reference that throughout the rest of the document and on the CIP document. I just had carried over from last year, I guess. So this is a plan for the next four fiscal years and the current fiscal year. You've also seen this document twice before. I did have to make a few corrections in it to match the other budget comparison document, so I wanted to go over that. Has to do with revenue, so the original document didn't have, did not have the property tax backfill revenue, so I added that under Fund 30.
And that was only 18,000 to 19,000 dollars?
Yeah. On page five. Just wanted to bring your attention that we're setting aside a million dollars to buy a new fire truck. So next year, we'll contribute another 107,000 dollars out of the CIP levy and then go for 575,000 to bond the rest of it. And Diana, even though it says refurbish on there, we had approved to do a new. Is that correct?
Um, so it's, we're proposing that it would be new. That was something that must not have gotten corrected in the, in the system, but ultimately that would be a discussion that we'd have next year during budget to, to make sure we've got the, the dollar amount there.
Thank you.
The next correction is on page 16. We originally had the revenues and expenses all coming out of fiscal year '20. We have already made expenses in fiscal year 19, so I went back and split them. So the total dollar amount is not anymore for these revenues or these expenses. However, I did add a $10,000 transfer in from Fund 130. When the insurance company paid us for the Coliseum, they deducted our $10,000 deductible out of, off of that payment, so we're just going to transfer that in from Fund 130. And then the last correction, again, on page 24, the stormwater. The proceeds were originally over here, 2,250,000, so I just moved them over one year. Any questions on this?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or public comment? I'm sorry, I have to make you get the microphone. For all those 7,000 people at home that are watching this instead of the basketball game.
Lee Botter, 401 Orchard Drive, just a quick question. What was the date and the time for the public hearing?
March 11.
Okay, and what was the time? 5:30? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's call the roll.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Thank you. Carry it. Now we move to item I and the first ordinance. Would you read that, please?
We have the first reading for ordinance approving changes to the Marshall Town zoning ordinance of 2010 regarding chapter 29, table of permitted and special uses for commercial and industrial districts.
Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. This is a ordinance we, in the, as part of the zoning ordinance, we have chapter 29, which is the table of all the uses within our commercial districts, what's permitted, special uses or not permitted within that. We did have a request that came forward to amend that chapter and specifically related to the regional commercial district, which would be areas that cover the Kmart, Metal Lane Mall area, and then the Marshall Town Mall Center. So those two areas are zoned regional commercial within our community. Those are only two regional commercial districts that we have. The request was made by U-Haul and companies to allow for personal storage rental spaces to be included, which are primarily accessed from the interior of the building with no more than three exterior accessed storage buildings. There's specifically interest in the Kmart Center, but as I said, this does apply to both regional commercial districts that we have. The Planning Commission had a review and a public hearing of this, and at their meeting on the 14th of February, during that hearing time, did have discussion and amended their, or I should say, made a motion to recommend that the recommendation come forward to allow for personal storage rental spaces, which are accessed, so removing primarily from the interior of the building and not allowing the additional of exterior accessed storage units as requested. So the, the commission, based on their discussion, made that proposal forward, which would allow for the interior, in this case of the Kmart Center, to be included for personal storage, but not to allow additional mini storage buildings to be out, outside of that building. In this case, they're proposing in the, in the front of the building and the park, what we'll consider the parking lot area of Kmart. So that request is what's been recommended to the council from the Planning Commission, the Plans Zoning Commission. This would be an ordinance change and therefore would have three readings by the council as well as a public hearing at your third and final reading. I know we do have representative here from U-Haul if you have questions related to that request. All right, entertain any questions that you may have of me.
Does the council have any questions or comments?
Just one.
Yes.
Didn't we look at this once before when the, the other mall was trying to sell some of the property out in front? Weren't we, we, didn't we have to change something? They were, they were looking at putting something else out in front of the mall, remember?
Um.
A few years ago?
I don't know that I recall, I mean, the last time we really dealt with things at the mall and putting things out front, we were dealing with a subdivision.
Oh, okay.
And we had some private sewer and things that we were working with.
Okay.
Other questions?
So, well, I guess, so Ms. Spahnheimer, just to be clear, the commission said yes to the indoor climate controlled storage, but no to more buildings being constructed in the parking lot.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Randy Dixon, President of U-Haul Company of Iowa. We are proposing an adaptive reuse of the existing 99,000 square foot Kmart building sitting on 7.2 acres by converting it into a state-of-the-art U-Haul moving and storage facility. Our uses consist of interior climate controlled self-storage, U-Haul truck and trailer sharing, related retail sales, custom hitch and bike rack installations. This infill development will allow U-Haul to better serve the moving and storage needs of the community and activate a property that has been vacant for about a year and a half. The existing building was constructed for the purposes of Kmart to serve as a big box retail store. As such stores, such as this one, become more and more obsolete, it becomes difficult to find tenants who can occupy such a large space without it becoming underutilized. U-Haul has over 50 of these projects, specifically Kmart's, and I personally have two completed with four more in the initial stages of development. Custom site design for every U-Haul store assures the facility complements the community it serves. Adherence to community standards is key in order to ensure that each U-Haul store is both a neighborhood asset and an economic success. More and more, we are positioning ourselves in mixed-use developments like this one, and our hope is that the revitalization of this property will complement the surrounding businesses and bring them more customers. We are looking to add at least five to 10 full and part-time jobs as the business grows. We feel that U-Haul would be an appropriate use for the property, and there are proven benefits for allowing self-storage facilities such as ours in communities. Self-storage facilities are quiet. They provide an excellent buffer between zones. They create very little traffic. They have little impact on utilities. They have no negative impact on schools. They provide a good tax revenue. They provide a community service. U-Haul stores generate less traffic volume while still embodying an active-use site. Truck and trailer sharing and self-storage all represent dynamic transitions from one customer to another. DIY moving customers are presented with opportunities to utilize equipment and storage on a temporary basis, supporting a shared economy, which is an effective economic model and an environmentally sound way to conduct business. Moving and storage are synergistic businesses. Over half of our storage customers tell us that they used U-Haul storage because of a household move. Customers typically use U-Haul equipment or their personal vehicle to approach the loading area and enter the building through the secured customer access. All new U-Haul stores are designed with interior storage load unload and interior room access, giving the customer the added value of increased security and the community the benefit of a more aesthetically pleasing exterior. Planned upgrades include exterior paint and imaging, exterior lighting upgrades to energy-efficient LED fixtures, roof replacement, and parking lot repairs, to name a few. Once we can, I know I'm a little late to the party, but once we can, we're going to offer a free month's storage to anyone that was affected by the tornado, if, if they still need it. U-Haul looks forward to working with the City of Marshall Town in this exciting endeavor. I'm here for any questions you might have.
About what kind of investment are you talking about?
Well, the, the building purchase is 1.4 million, and we're probably going to put at least 2 million more in it.
Thank you. I saw the story about the one down in Des Moines in the register last week.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Question here. I met with you Friday or so, and I questioned again the outside storage thing, and I've, I've come to realize it's more of an advertising thing than it is an actual usable storage. I'm perplexed and divided personally with the recommendation of our Planning and Zoning Commission. Because it is a corridor, it does set new ground, it breaks, it would cause a change in ordinance, although I'm very pleased with your proposal and what can be done and what is proposed to be done with the building. Is there any way that that advertising outdoor thing can be modified? I know it's an advertising ploy, it's a come on, it's part of the thing.
Yeah, we typically put, try to put those out front to create awareness to the drive-by public. We do rent them, but with somewhere between 600, 700 storage rooms on the interior of the building. we don't, we don't need them except for to create awareness. So could we modify them in some way? I would think so, if there's some ideas. And we're gonna, we're gonna make them look nice. They're gonna blend in with the, with the imaging of the building. So primarily, we use earth tones to kind of tone things down. I, I'm, we can put some more trees out front as well to kind of soften the drive-by. Maybe some more bushes or something to help dress it up, too.
Other questions or comments?
Is there a possibility that you could drop from three to one and not have it? I'm not sure of the location from the store to the sidewalk, but have less units out there and still have your advertising.
We, we could do one, although one makes it seem a little more random. Three's not going to be necessary, for sure. But if left with one row as compared to zero, we would be far better off for it.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm, I'm pleased with the idea. I like the idea of the whole setup, and I would be really disappointed if the action that we would take would have you just walk away.
I agree with Councilman Hoop that I do think this is a great use for that facility, and I think that it would add to our overall tax base and keep us, keep us from having big empty buildings lining our main street. I would rather have a recognized firm that people recognize and know what the services are, and I appreciate your thoughts that you want to make it, whether through trees or landscaping, make it more easier on the eye. But I think that we need to, to look at the option between that great big empty building, and I think that this is a great usage for it.
Thank you. Other councilor comments or questions? Any public comment?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I don't know how this is going to affect, we have a local business owner who's a U-Haul franchise, and so are they pulling his franchise? So you're actually?
No.
Okay, I didn't know.
Should I go ahead and address that?
Sure.
No, we, we welcome them to, to stay with us as long as they want to. We'll partner with them to serve the community. No intention of making them go away, and I made that clear to the owner as well.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I have, I have one. I, I met with a gentleman this weekend, and he's already had the local neighbors all come in, and he had 30 or 40 neighbors show up to a meeting, and they were all very positive on him coming to town, so I think we ought to keep that in mind. We talked about, since the credit union is thinking about rebuilding a building and maybe would like a little more of their property, that maybe when we could move his buildings back just a little bit so the center line and, and the front, and the front line of those buildings are equal. I, I'm, I'm supportive. I drive by that building, and I'm thinking, huh, who, who can we ever get to get into that thing? And then all, once he comes up and he's willing to do this, and I want that building full. And I want to tax, somebody paying taxes on it, so we got it. So I'm, I'm supportive of his, of his company and, and their proposal.
I admitted to Mr. Dixon that I was glad I don't have a vote on this issue because my wife still serves on planning and zoning. And she reminds me of the times that the council has reversed PNC a lot. Reminds me a lot.
Does that mean she's gonna call me now, Joel?
Yeah, yeah. She's got your number at your cell. And she's going to the game tonight.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I could have went with her.
Any other comments? Otherwise, let's go ahead and vote on it.
Just to, just to be clear, if, if there is something desired other than what the recommendation is for the amended request, which is on the memo up in front of you, that is the language that is in the ordinance that is before you, where there's been a motion and a second. And so what you'd be voting on is the amended request, not the original request or some variation of that.
Wait a minute. Run that by one more time.
So, I'll pull up the ordinance.
Right, so the ordinance was prepared based on Plan Zoning's recommendation, not the original request.
Okay.
So if you want to amend that at all, that needs to be amended as part of the motion because we will have to post public hearing and things as well, so.
Well, then I would, I would move to amend Planning and Zoning's recommendation and allow for not more than two buildings to be built out front and make sure that they're, the front of those buildings are equal with any other buildings being built in that neighborhood so that they, they're congenial with everybody else.
I would, I would lean towards the fact that we would have a front yard setback, and that would be what we would look for, for compliance.
Okay.
Rather than referring to other structures that may or may not change.
That's fine with me.
Is there a second to that motion to amend?
I second that amendment.
Any other discussion?
I'm, I'm concerned with the view from Center Street of the rest of the buildings, and I'm sure that's where Planning and Zoning is coming from, too. I love the idea of trees and all that. I say, dress it up, make it look great. Not that this building wouldn't be an attractive building, but there are other businesses in there that I, it seems like it would really stick out in a strange way.
I will just comment as well that, you know, although the proposals and, you know, nice of design and landscaping and things, those are not.
Right.
Requirements. And so should another proposal come in to build a storage unit at one of the regional commercial districts, it's allow, it is allowing that, it's not, those kind of things aren't subject to design. So that was a conversation that was had at the commission level as well.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Let's take the roll call then on the motion to amend to allow up to two buildings. And if that passes, then we'll take another vote on the ordinance itself.
Okay, so the amendment was to approve the, the first reading, amending it to allow not more than two buildings built according to the front set line.
Nope, nope. Just the, the, I was gonna say, if we go to the language of what was in the.
Not more than two buildings?
Personal storage rental spaces, which are primary, primarily accessed from the interior of a building with no more than two exterior access storage buildings.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to reference setbacks because those are just already in part of the ordinance.
Exterior access buildings.
And that's, that's a language that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I think we all understand that.
Okay.
Don't we? But we're voting to allow up to two buildings.
All right, Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
No.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Weirin?
No.
Cahill?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good, thank you. By the way, I really think the mayor ought to have a vote, and so for the next mayor, who is not going to be me, I think you should consider that for these close votes, you know, if somebody doesn't, is at the basketball game.
We would have to completely reorganize our form of government.
Really? Well, I think we got three, you know, three years and 10 months. No, we don't, two years and 10 months. All right, let's go on to the next ordinance.
You have to still vote on the.
Oh, we do, don't we? Yep, let's vote on now the way it has been amended, the ordinance to allow the new zoning change.
Okay, so this is first reading as amended. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
That was Gowdy and Weirin?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good. Now let's go to the second and final ordinance of the night.
We have the first reading of an ordinance approving changes to the zoning ordinance of 2010 regarding Chapter 19 Traditional Neighborhood District and rezoning the properties at 108, 110, 112, and 114 North 3rd Avenue from R4 medium density to traditional neighborhood.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm over to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. As you may recall, we had a study that was completed in June of last year on the Highway 14 corridor. And one of the recommendations as part of that plan was to look at the land use and zoning classifications along the corridor. We have been in the process of doing that as the Planning Commission has been working with Bolton and Mink on, on that and myself and in looking at what was most appropriate. That is still a little ways off. And in the meantime, we have a request from the Ecklers who are looking to develop the property, starting at 108, which would be the, there was a kind of a strip mall apartment complex just north of the funeral home. That blew away, if you recall. And so looking at that property as well as potentially acquiring some of the properties to the north to build a new laundromat. They did sustained damage to their facility here on Center Street and have not been open since July 19th. So they are looking to do that. Right now, that property is owned R4, which is a medium-density residential district. The Traditional Neighborhood District is a zoning classification that we currently have on our books. That originally, when we did the Highway 14 study, the recommendation was to look at that district as a possibility along the corridor. So in looking at that for this particular project, since we don't have a new district established and defined yet, we consider the Traditional Neighborhood as an option that most met some of the design guidelines and aesthetics and goals set out by the study. Yet, the district itself needs a little bit of adjustment in order to accommodate the proposed use and, and layout that the Ecklers are wanting to do. So this is kind of a two-fold discussion as we're talking about rezoning some parcels to the Traditional Neighborhood and also doing some amendment to the district itself and, in language. And the, the primary pieces that we were looking at with regards to the text language would allow for parking on the side of the building, just one row of parking along with the drive aisle, where currently in the Traditional Neighborhood District zone, we don't allow any parking on a side or in front, has to be to the rear of the building. So this would allow some amount of parking on a side of a building, but not all of it to be on the side and none in the front. It also removed, caveat which was a little bit contradicting related to building size and maximum building width as well, that was in the Traditional Neighborhood. When we first established the Traditional Neighborhood District, really the only area that we had on there was 13th Street, which was very small lots, very small, you know, spaces. So those things didn't fit necessarily for this or for some other areas that we've looked at Traditional Neighborhood in the recent, recent past. So we made that, that change and the addition of the parking to allow some parking on the side of the building, also requiring some landscaping in accordance with our Chapter 6 between the parking and, and the right-of-way. So those are the changes that are recommended as part of the amendment to the district itself, as well as in rezoning the properties. It basically looked up, up to, from the alleyway north to Bromley, where Bromley would come across if it went through, if you think of that as a place to change. The commission had a lot of discussion about this, too, related to the fact that as we do proceed with the rest of the changes for the overall corridor, that this area could see a change again to then be consistent with that. So we were trying to find something that would match with what our end goals are there, and so that we were in line with things right now at this point in time. But this would allow the Ecklers to move forward on their project as they're hitting some time limitations with insurance and, and things as well before we're ready to make a final recommendation on an ordinance for the overall corridor.
Any questions or comments?
And I think we may have representatives from CGA if possible, but the Ecklers were not going to maybe be able to make it at another meeting, and so.
I would think that would be a popular thing to have there for that neighborhood. Any questions or comments? Let's go ahead and, a public comment, I guess. Let's vote.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Good, carried, thank you. Onto item J, and the first discussion item is the police and fire building cost update.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So before you is an update of the costs for the police and fire building. Have total revenue of about $18 million. Comes from several bond issuances, interest, and a few miscellaneous items. And come down here in our expenses, we've spent $13.5 million, and we still haven't covered about $3.3. So we have not committed $1.3 million yet. This, these numbers do not include, include anything that you just approved tonight. Any questions? Thank you.
So, yeah. The $3.3 million, that includes.
$1.3 million?
No.
Oh, three point, which, where you look.
$3.3.
For encumbrances?
Yes. That includes, in case there's no change orders, that's just bid items, right? That's a total cost as bid?
Correct, that's everything that's been encumbered. You know, there's, we still have quite a few of our contracts that are not 100% complete at this point. So that's everything that's still outstanding to be paid on, on what we've committed ourselves to.
Okay, and that's not taking into account that we have any change orders to that amount, right?
That's correct. I would say that it's fair to say that we'll, we'll still be anticipating some change orders to come through just with the, the delay in the timeline. But ultimately, at this point, in talking with Justin, it does not seem like those will total $1.3 million or come close to that, I think.
He hopes. He's dreaming, too. So are you. We haven't put a brick on the building yet.
As I understand, though, that the Mason has agreed to handle the liquidated damages and things of that nature, so that we shouldn't be expecting a whole lot of change orders from the Mason that replaced.
I, I think it's fair to say that's a matter that is still pending litigation. And so if you'd like an update at a future council meeting on that, we can certainly discuss that.
I think that'd be good.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Let's go on to the next item, which is the discussion of the public art at the police and fire building.
So it probably would have been about this time anyways, that we would have been back before you had we been talking about a March opening date still. And what I included basically in the memo was what it was before you back, and I, I think it was in early August, late July was when that happened. And so what's being requested is $50,000 for artwork with $5,000 being basically set aside to assist with the process of having, giving a budget to a stipend artist to have them basically modify, manufacture something for things to be seen. So this would not be before you tonight unless we were comfortable with where we were at a $1.3 million surplus at this point, knowing that number will decrease. But really, at this point, just looking at what change orders that, that might include related to some of the, the extension of expenses as we go forward here. the the extension of expenses as we go forward here.
And this request comes from the Marshalltown Public Art Committee?
Well, I mean, I, no, it really, I mean, it really comes from city staff here. That was something that I think had been discussed. The Public Art Committee and the Marshall County Arts and Culture Alliance are our partners. And as we had this conversation initially in July, there was a lot of support there to help see this through if this would be something the Council would approve. But this is something that I think, from the city staff perspective and from the Arts and Culture Alliance impact perspective, it's something we'd all like to see happen.
I recognize several of those board members and staff from those organizations. If you, if anybody wants to ask any questions about it.
I am. I'm not opposed to public art. I'm opposed to us doing it now until we have this conversation about the bricklayers and until the project is closer to being done. I don't want to spend that money. I think personally, I feel like our police chief and our fire chief went over and above to cut, cut things out of the original project to get it down. So we got down to the $17 million so we could fund it and the public would go along with funding it. And if we get a little extra money, I'd rather see them have the opportunity to have a few of the things back that we cut out before we start doing the public art thing. I, I think that we owe that to them because they did an excellent job of getting the project put together. And I think we owe it to them to have first opportunity to put some of those things back into the building. That's, that's just my personal feelings.
Sure. Anyone else have any different feelings or similar?
So I don't disagree, but I guess with, with 1.3 left, you're talking 4%. Or if you look at the overall budget, you're talking .3% of the overall budget that we're looking to spend towards this. And at the end of the day, I think that as you put a state-of-the-art facility in and you look at some of the re-establishment 13th Street or the drills that are culled out, it's a big piece of making it a part of the community, which I think is a key part of that conversation. And so, I get what you're saying in unencumbered costs as far as an overall budget and what that'll look like. But I think at the end of the day, we're probably going to move forward with some type of this conversation. And so moving forward with it now versus pushing it down the road for months, I'm not quite sure that makes sense either.
The, the thing we have to keep in mind is you'll remember, we had a bunch of money budgeted to do all the stormwater work, and we're doing that all out of bonds. We're not, so, so that's why this number looks a lot bigger than what it really should be. If you take that, those numbers out, you'll find out that we don't have $1.3 million left.
One thing I do want to point out that is still on the spreadsheet up above, related to, you know, the police chief and fire chief being able to outfit the building in the way they see fit, is that related in that furniture fixtures and equipment line item, which you did bump up to $750,000, there is still $323,000, which is not encumbered yet. And so that's as, as I think Justin and I have had conversations with both of the chiefs, that is money that's there to equip the building that, that you set aside for furniture fixtures and equipment. And if things fit into that category, then that's where they would be able to take those out of.
I guess I'd like to point out that in modern times, maybe even older times, that 1% of the total budget for a public building has been designated toward public art that blends in and enhances the building and public ownership. And we're nowhere near that with the $55,000. I understand the caution with expense and so on, but we've done a lot of flexing. And I think this is an important part that needs to be considered now and moving forward.
I would have to bet, given the groups that are all for having the art, given the reaction to the artwork that we've seen crop up with drills and the 13th Street and our gallery garden and other things. And for those of you who've driven down Main Street up in Cedar Falls and checked out what they've done with their public properties up there, I'd have to bet that the people interested in pursuing the art thing should not delay exploring what options are out there, because I'm having to bet that we're going to be under budget enough that we can afford to have that really pop like, like it does in those places. And if you walk in the community Y, we have a nice sculpture right there too. So I personally would hope that we don't put the brakes on too, too hard.
Would this $55,000 be to find an artist and find a concept, but not include the cost of whatever they're going to pick?
That's one where we probably should invite somebody still on the Public Art Committee to address. I was on it back when we did the first, the Echo, but they kicked me off when they figured out I had no artistic bent at all.
I think what we're saying, Councilmember Hoop, is that it's a $50,000 budget that the artist would, whatever artist would be selected, would know that they would have to work in. And so it would be a $50,000 piece of art.
I think what the impact did the first time was know what the budget was, solicit suggestions. And there was quite a bit of interest, like we had eight or 10 artists that gave renditions. And then we had a public meeting and narrowed it down to two or three. And, and now we've got that nice Echo.
Well, I, I enjoy the renovated roundhouse and the new facilities at the high school. I drive every, by every day. But my favorite is drills. I love looking at that every day. I think it's so cool. So it just spiffs it up. It's totally unexpected and just really cool. Something I could have never come up with in a million years. So.
I forgot who told me about this. I'm sorry to interrupt, but it was this weekend, we had, oh, I know. It was one of the media people told me that he was there for the basketball game. Other towns were here. And he couldn't believe how many people were having their pictures taken in the pouring rain by drills, just because it's that cool. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay. I get it.
What is our action on this? Do we need a motion? Do we?
Yes. That's where I would like there to be a motion. I'm going to change it a little bit from what I had put in my memo, that it would be, you know, we'd actually have it come back probably as a resolution on the next council meeting to formally set that budget, just so that there was clarity. So requesting a motion to direct staff to bring back a resolution to allocate $55,000 in the police and fire building budget for public art.
I will make that motion, just as you said it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or public comment?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to get to see this before we buy it?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that's, and that's part, I don't know if Amber would like to speak to that, but this would not be something where Impact just does something on their own. This would be involving probably city employees, city council, yes, and that there would be a public input process.
Perfect.
Public comment?
Lee Bott, our 401 Orchard Drive. And I'd like to remind Council of what we've been talking about for the past seven months post tornado and in respect to the public art situation. First of all, I love public art. I am the co-founder of Splash for Life and part of that project. We have a lot of public art incorporated in our dream and in our vision. With the public art at the police station, part of the holdback was let's figure out where we are from a tornado perspective. And I totally agree with Councilman Lamar. Let's figure out where we are from a budget perspective first, before we spend the dollars. In respect to design elements, one of the things that we requested specifically was to have the design go around the Marshalltown strong, something around that concept. And I do agree, the police chief and the fire chief have done an awesome job on toying the line in response, in response to expenses. And so part of the historical preservation ongoing with Marshalltown strong, these guys are strong. Let's keep it Marshalltown strong. If we can even bring that piece or a replication of what's been done on Sixth Street, I would like to see that. And there's been a lot of public input to that and on social media. There's been a lot of people talking about that. So please remember that as you go through this process.
Thank you. Any other comment?
Amber Danielson, 803 West Main Street. I'm the Director of the Marshall County Arts and Culture Alliance. And I'm here tonight to obviously tell you I support adding $55,000 to the budget for the police and fire department. Just briefly to let you know what our mission is, it is to support and promote arts and culture in the community. We're passionate about making Marshalltown the place to live, work, and play. And it is imperative to doing so, to ensure art is embedded into our DNA as a community. The arts strengthen our economy, drive tourism, spark creativity and innovation, and connect people of all ages and ethnicities. And it provides a channel for our community to create its unique identity. As we are presented with opportunities like the police and fire building, it is our hope that council members support public art and buildings as an essential and necessary part of the project and not an add-on. The Marshall Public Art Committee, also known as IMPAC, is a division of the Alliance, who's worked closely, as you guys have already discussed, with projects like Echo on 13th Street. In addition, Alliance continues to work directly with city staff to manage our Iowa Great Places designation, which is a result of a successful great application with the Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs in 2014. And I wanted to point out that previously tonight, Council approved the 2019 and, excuse me, 20 strategic plan that states to partner with citizens for profit, nonprofit, and other groups to improve quality of life. And specifically on there, as Jessica mentioned, was to partner with the Arts and Culture Alliance and IMPAC to promote public art in the community by developing a plan for public art. The purpose of IMPAC is to provide art in publicly accessible spaces and be resource for city projects. We have proven our success in the last five years and believe that that's why the city continues to partner and see us as a resource. And as Gabe, you referenced to, with the remaining $1.3 million of unspent and non-committed funds, the $55,000 is .3% of the total bond for $17.5 million. And I also wanted to point out that the city has seen over $277,000 in accrued interest for the project, which could be another way to invest those dollars back into the building without tapping into any additional bond funds if this was a concern. Lastly, since this is a future home of the city police and fire department, I did want to recognize that I have spoke with both Chief Tupper and Chief Ryerson, and they are in support of this request. And I also felt it was worthy to note that although I do support this because of my position with the Alliance, I also, as a young professional who's raising a family in Marshalltown, see great value and importance in public art and being a part of the community I live in. So in conclusion, IMPAC is excited for the opportunity to continue to work with the city representation to further their goals, improve the quality of life by promoting public art. And with the strategic plan just recently being approved tonight, this is a great opportunity to start implementing the plan. I can speak to the process that we've gone through, which I've seen and heard a few questions on that, if you would like me to.
How about doing kind of a big three or four-point picture of the major steps, how the Echo ended up being here?
Yeah, on both Echo and Drills, IMPAC worked with representation of the community who partnered in that project. So for 13th Street, we obviously had representation from the 13th Street District, some city representation being city property. And then we went through the process to send out a request for qualifications. And as you alluded to, 15 artists replied to Echo, 61 artists replied to Drills at the high school. So before that's sent out though, that steering committee identified with the project partners goes through a process to identify the goals of the project. So certainly that can be identified before it's sent out. The artist has criteria to work within. And then obviously, we let them do their creative work because that's what they do best. So then from there, the steering committee would review those proposed and then select a piece from there. And community engagement has always been a really important piece of this process for IMPAC. We see that that's crucial in the process to make sure that, that the city has an opportunity to be a part of that process. So that looks different for every project, so I can't speak to exactly what that would look like in this case, but know that we do think that that's an important piece of the process.
This is a good opportunity for me to thank you for the work you've done for Trails and your group is helping out with that $250,000 Ann Kaiser Trailhead project. And then someday, we need to revisit, what are we going to do back here? We have such a nice council chamber. We just never have put anything up that looks nice here.
It's still in the strategic plan, Your Honor.
Thanks. Sorry. I can't help myself sometimes.
Has been for 10 years.
Yeah. Well, let's execute.
Any other questions? I do have other people here supporting that can probably speak to things too. So if not, thank you.
Any other discussion, public comment? If not, let's vote on the motion pending.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good. And our final discussion item is about compost bag sales.
Good evening. Justin Nichol, Public Works Director. There is a memo in your packet. Our current supplier of paper bags printed with Marshalltown logo has changed their business model and is no longer looking to sell to municipalities. As such, we thought this was an opportunity, time to review our sales model. Quick, brief discussions with other suppliers indicate that we don't purchase a large enough quantity of bags to warrant them printing our logo on bags. As such, we would need, either need to up our, our budget, or we would propose another alternative that the city either get out of the sale of bags altogether, simply sell bags that have no Marshalltown logo on them, and still collect the $1 fee for selling the bags with no logo and then the $1 fee when the bags come through the gate full of compost. We have had a couple discussions with local vendors. They see no problem with selling the bags that they would sell normally with a Menards logo or a Hy-Vee logo. Really, we're looking for input, or if anybody has any strong feelings. I don't, I don't perceive it as cost beneficial for us to continue to print bags with the Marshalltown logo, but that's only my input. So would be looking for direction as to which way staff should move forward for upcoming season. And be happy to answer any questions.
You're not considering plastic, for sure?
Uh, I must freely admit, I haven't had the time to make this a huge priority. We certainly can, without a street superintendent, I haven't had anyone to lean on to pursue this either. We could easily make the decision for this season and continue to look at it for the next season. I'll freely admit, I'm not a compost expert either.
That's not my point. I guess I was being, trying to be facetious and I failed.
There are others. In our quick, quick study, yes, there are other communities that do have the compostable plastic bags. That is an alternative, but I don't have any cost information or any supplemental information to follow that trail.
I come down hard on the side of private business, private enterprise doing this. I don't care whose name is on it. City should get out of it. Period.
What about the idea of buying a stamp for 15 bucks and buying the Menards or other bags and stamping them so we know they are official ones?
We certainly could follow that model. I'm open to interpretation. The main point was that screen printing them was no longer cost, cost effective.
Well, I was thinking the guys, the guys that run, that run the compost could do that. Yeah, heck, I got a lot of spare time. I could do it myself.
Once you retire, you'll go to work down there anyway, right?
I hope so. One of my fellow compatriot lawyers is working out there.
We'll have to interview to see if you meet some of the qualifications.
Do you do a background check? Forget it. Yeah. The other question would be where to stamp it, you know, and have it still work.
I, I would encourage that we get out of the bag business.
Get out of sales altogether or simply go to the sale of unprinted bags. We certainly, I'm not sure what our supply is, but we do have some remaining, but we.
Where do you sell those out of? Out of the compost?
Out of the compost shack, yes.
They've also been at Hy-Vee though, too.
Yes, the local vendors have bought them and sold them as well.
But we haven't had that here recently where they've been available in the last year or two, where they've been available elsewhere.
I haven't been as intimately involved. Maybe not last year, but I know at least two years ago, yes, Hy-Vee and Menards were purchasers. Sometimes they go fast and sometimes they don't buy a large enough quantity that you may not see them for the whole season at those retail vendors.
So were we, were we making money on the deal or were we losing money on the deal the way it was before?
I'm not sure I have any numbers to back it up. It's, it's certainly not a large.
Well, I know it's not a large money maker. I mean, like, were we, were we selling them? How were we buying them? And then, I'm just wondering, like?
If my memory serves me correctly, and I could easily be proven wrong with the numbers, but I believe it was pretty much a break even. What we purchased the bags for was about what we sold them for to the general public. Never has compost been. Never has compost been a large revenue maker. It has been on the plus side for the last couple of years, but not, not making a, a big revenue.
I know, in my limited experience of using compost bags, I've always been able to find them at any retailer, whether it, I mean, several throughout town have them and typically I never went to the compost looking for them, even though apparently some people do. It sounds if, whether we're selling them, stamping them anyway, it seems like we have an awful expensive person worrying about a stamp on bags. I mean, I think that we have with our limited staff in those areas right now, we have other issues that we could spend our time more productively on. And I would propose that we let the retailers in town become the vendors of those bags.
Is there a consensus? It seems like people are shaking their heads yes, or they're nodding off one or the other. Okay, I think, I think you have your direction. I don't think you need a motion for this one.
Fair enough for me.
Yeah, and I think if you find from your compost people that they have people still, like there's, like they live in that neighborhood and they really don't go anywhere else, they just stay in the neighborhood and they need an outlet. I mean, can there be like petty cash or something and the compost guy runs to the store once in a while and just keeps a small supply?
We've had instances before where we've run low on the, the screen printed bags and so we've bought a pallet of the, of the plain bags. We can certainly keep an eye on the, on the supply and demand and, and we can offer a smaller quantity.
But I don't think they have to be stamped. I don't. They should just sign their name on them or something, like. No.
You can actually take plastic too, you just have to dump all the leaves out and take the plastic back and, back and dispose of it. Okay, I think that's, we've discussed that dead horse enough.
Yes, thank you.
Go forward. All right, let's see, we have a closed session coming up. Before that, it's time for a public comment, if anybody has comments to make publicly.
What he said?
If nobody stands up, I don't have to read the long blurb about that, so let's consider it's time for the closed session. Thank you for coming.
Do we need a motion to move?
We do need a motion to go into closed session.
Just a minute.
So moved.
Second.
And I think we have to read it in this pursuant to section.
We did a motion in a second. Lamer and Martin?
Yep.
For section twenty-one point five.
Twenty-one point five.
Subsection one. Paragraph C.
Close session pursuant to section twenty-one five, subsection six, subsection one, paragraph C of the Code of Iowa, to discuss strategy with council matters where the litigation is imminent, where a disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the city in that litigation. The city of Marshalltown has an attorney-client relationship with Attorney Roger Shell, appointed as city attorney on May five, 2014, and with Lynch-Dallas PC by council resolution, May seventeen, zero, nine, three. And there could be motion following closed session directing staff to proceed as discussed during closed session. It is February twenty-fifth and the time is?
Seven oh three.
Seven oh three.
Do we need a roll call on that one?
Roll call in closed session.